Good evening. I now call to order the March 26, 2025 regular city council meeting to order. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Protem Bazagian, council members Albrecht and Weintraub, as well as city staff. Councilmember Shapiro has an excused absence. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. Speaker cards can be found in the back of the room. Members of the public who need hearing assistance can request a device from the city clerk as well. We're going to start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Girl Scout Troop 1776.
May I please have your attention for the flag ceremony?
Please stand for the presentation of the colors.
Color guard, attention. Color guard, advance. Color guard, halt.
Color guard, present the colors.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Color guard, present the colors. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, salute the colors. Color guard, dismissed.
Thank you for that. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Weintraub, seconded by councilmember Albrecht. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. Closed session. We did meet in closed session before this public meeting. City attorney, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. Prior to this open session, we did meet to confer on the existing litigation of the city of Calabasas versus the county of Los Angeles and County Sanitation District Number Two. No reportable action was taken on that item. We also met with the city's labor negotiator with respect to the unrepresented employees. Again, items were discussed, but no reportable action was taken. We will reconvene after this open session back into closed session to discuss items number three and four with respect to public employee performance evaluations of the city manager and the city attorney, as well as anticipated litigation with one matter.
Thank you. There are no presentations tonight, so we'll move right into council announcements. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, mayor. I do have a couple of announcements tonight. One which I'm sorry to say is very sad. The reason for our missing council member, David Shapiro, was his mom had passed away. So for those that would like to express their concern and their sorrow, he's coming back from Northern California. He'll be back on Sunday or Monday. On a more happier note, we had Arbor Day just last weekend, and it is a very happy note because we're so happy to have a new park. Now it's probably celebrating its second year on the east side of town. And we planted some very special trees, coastal live oaks, which are really amazing. And for those of you residents that haven't been to the park, it is very unique. It's not just a dog park, but it's a kid's park, and it's a park to relax in with water and bathroom and all the amenities. So take advantage of it. I also had the pleasure, very distinct pleasure, as well as other council members, I'm sure they'll have something to say about it as well, visiting the Ocean Well Project with the Las Verginis Municipal Water District, demonstration of a new way to purify water. It's hopefully, will be used actually in the ocean, using ocean pressure and another form of desalinization. So you'll hear it, maybe you'll have heard it first or second here on the council, but the word "ocean well" beyond the surface is going to be a common word, common expression in their future, maybe even around the world. It's an amazing project. So it was spearheaded by the Las Verginis Municipal Water District. We're very proud it was in this part of the area. Other events, we have Earth Day coming up, April 12, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. over on Las Verginis Creek near Starbucks, exhibitors for sustainability, environmental stewardesship. It's a wonderful event, learn a lot of things, and it's catched on very, very well. And lastly, we had a special recognition for our wonderful Captain C2, Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Department, through Supervisor Horvath in honor of Women's History Month. That was done in James Hahn Hall downtown. Very well-deserved recognition. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Weintraub.
Just wanted to announce that the city's of Calabasas Explore Calabasas hiking program will be debuting its second season for the spring of 2025. There will be more information on our website, but you need to sign up and make a reservation to participate in this program. But it's a really popular way to see some of the local hiking trails, and we hope that you'll be able to participate in that program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bazagian.
I do not, thank you.
All right. I'll make one other announcement then, and that is the mayor's, the men's pro tennis championships are happening here at the Calabasas Swim and Tennis Center. The 24th USTA Men's Pro Tennis Championships are going on, singles qualifying on March 24th and 25th, and the main draw matches will begin on March 25th. Championship weekend, March 28th to the 30th. Admission is free, March 22nd to the 27th. General admission costs $15 on championship weekend. Get your tickets online and come join us. We'll move on then to public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. I have three speaker cards. If anybody else would like to speak, you can fill out a speaker card in the back of the room and hand it to our city clerk, Lisa Pope. I'll start with the ones that I have, beginning with Mark Levinson. Please introduce yourself with your name and city of residence.
Thank you, mayor and councilmember. It is a sad day for David Shapiro, who is a super, super person, who has been involved in every community activity in this community, in this city that I can remember, started the mayor's council for students, and is just a super guy. I'm very excited to hear that. The business community's been very active, and we have a number of ribbon cuttings coming up. This Friday, we have one for Supra Foods in the comments. That's at 3:30. On the fourth of next, I'm sorry, the third of next month, is Allegation Gold, a new member also, is having a ribbon cutting at 5:30. On the fourth, there's our pickleball tournament this year. It's going to be at the pickleball club. I noticed that the city does not have a team yet, and we'd appreciate getting a team, as well as you guys did in the bowling tournament. But anyway, the proceeds from that are going to scholarships for the high school. So it's, it's a fun event with a very, very good cause coming from it. And then on the eighth, we have the honor of having the mayor speak at the education forum. So thank you, mayor. And then on the really, what I think is good side, I think everyone knows Iris Stone, who is First Vice Chair of the Chamber. She's selected one of the United Chamber's inspirational women this year. There are five. Iris is one of them. She is a tremendous asset to the community and to the chamber, a well-deserved recognition. And with me also this evening is Griffin Green, who is a new member to the chamber, a resident of Calabasas, and is interested in becoming more involved in the community. Griffin.
Hi, my name is Griffin Green. Thank you for having me. This is my first city council meeting, and I, it was my first Chamber of Commerce meeting on Monday. Just looking to get more involved in the community. I've lived in Calabasas for about three years, worked previously as a mortgage loan officer, so just looking to implement those skills into serving the community. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next speaker is Beth, and you'll have to help me, Moheden. And if you would, please give us the correct pronunciation.
Beth Moheden. Beth Moheden. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. I've raised my two sons here and very grateful for that. A couple of decades of raising two, two boys in the Las Verginis School District who have gone on to Berkeley and are now working. So I'm very grateful. My youngest son won an award from Mayor Shapiro. He had an abundant amount of hours at the library, and so we really participated, and we just love the area and very grateful. A couple of things, if I may. One thing is, when my husband passed away post-COVID, we were, it was a two-income family, and it was a shock when it had happened. He's a professor, and he had traveled quite extensively. And soon after his return from Asia, he, he passed away about five months into it. It was around post-COVID period. We then set up our home as an Airbnb, okay? And it was, Airbnb was set up for those who wanted to hold on to their homes, not to line their pockets and make money. It was never the case. And recently, I must say, and I've had a wonderful experience meeting people throughout Europe, Asia. It's just been a wonderful opportunity and just a great PR for, for Calabasas. But recently, I did get a notice from the city saying that that wasn't allowed unless there was a minimum of one month's stay. And I just wanted to express that it's made it very, very difficult for me as a single mom with two boys, trying to make it, trying to hang on to my house, as everybody is, and it was my way of doing it. It wasn't to line my pockets, never the case. And I just am disappointed. I'm disappointed that I got this notice, and it was just a great opportunity while it lasted, first of all. And I don't know if that will ever change. My sons seem to think it won't, but I just wanted to explain where I'm coming from in operating my Airbnb and how successful it was in getting my two kids through to Berkeley. Secondly, I would, my, my kids have grown up in the library, in the library system. We were at the library probably every single week in the last 25 years. We were at the library when it was across the street, when it moved over here. My son had his own office, so to speak, got an award from David Shapiro. And, and I'd love if, if at all possible, the hours could be extended at the library. I think it's, it's just, I was in there one day this week, and there was an abundant amount of students in there studying. And I think this cutback on, on hours is, is something to think about, okay? Lastly, I was a seven-year member of Agora Hills Community Center, which is now Calabasas Community Center. And I think, and James knows me from there. I've volunteered many, many years there, et cetera. And I think that somebody needs to take a deeper dive into the Calabasas Community Center and maybe mirror it to the way that it was run as Agora Hills Community Center. Our tax money is going in there. I, I, I am questioning the way in which it's operated right now, and many of my friends have now since left because the, the way that it's, they've been charged, et cetera. So if, if perhaps somebody could take a deeper dive into the way that, that the Calabasas Community Center is being run, I, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I love this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Clark Canfield. And if you'll give us your name and city of residence, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, council, city manager, city attorney. I'm here tonight to speak about traffic that's on Lost Hills Road, especially in respects to the truck traffic that's occurring on there. The traffic normally is, is very heavy on that artery, and the truck traffic has only increased that, that situation. We have, my particular property backs to Lost Hills Road, and I get to experience the traffic every day. The amount of shaking in my house is just unbearable almost at this point because of the amount of trucks that are going up and down there from the fire debris to the landfill. That route is, is troublesome with traffic as it is, especially during the school periods. As councilmember Bazagian knows and has experienced firsthand, there's double parking that goes on. There's, that's the only official school crossing to AE Right and for AE Right. Why there's literally hundreds of dump trucks going up and down that road with that type of an exposure to those children, I don't know. I, today I watched the crossing guard holding back the trucks and trying to protect the children from going back and forth. I understand that that road is a southbound truck route, and the northbound truck route is Las Verginis Road. Why it's even a truck route at all, Las Verginis at this point, is just mind-boggling to me due to the fact that I think it was designated as a truck route before we even had a school crossing, obviously, and before we had a community center, which a lot of people travel from the, from the east to the west, trying to traverse that road. The trucks are not obeying the truck routes. Granted, right now, technically, southbound trucks can go up and down that road or one direction on that road, and northbound trucks are supposed to be going on Las Verginis Road. I constantly see northbound trucks on Lost Hills Road, and some are tarped, most are tarped. A lot of them, I've seen several trucks stop before they get to the freeway and adjust their tarps before they get to the landfill. So I guess they don't get fined or charged additional fees. And then the southbound trucks, of course, are not covered. And I can tell you that there's a, been a constant layer of dust and powder in my backyard, including the inside of my house from, I guess, the remnants of the truck after they've dumped their load and have only driven not even a mile away down to Cold Springs. And I guess the air circulation as they're traveling 45 miles an hour without a tarp on the back blows up the remnants of what's ever left in the truck. So I would like somebody to take a look at that, if at all possible, due to the fact that I think we've got a safety issue. They're not following the truck route. There's debris that's coming out of the back of the trucks, and I, I, I just think we've got a problem here, and I would appreciate somebody taking a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, so just a comment for the public. We, we can't address in this council meeting items that are not on the agenda, but I do have email addresses on the speaker cards here, so we will have our city manager reach out to you where possible. That moves us to the consent calendar. Does any of my fellow council members wish to pull any items on consent?
Eight and 10, please.
Eight and 10? Anybody else? Okay. Let's go ahead and start with number eight, councilmember Mayor Protem Bazagian.
So I get a better understanding of this. We're not paying for this land. This was donated. And according to whatever documents I was able to look at here, is that slit, is it just that rectangular sliver that we're getting?
That's correct.
Is there, was there any kind of entitlement attached to this land, or what was the?
Never an entitlement. We just had a homeowner reach out to us and offered to donate his property to us.
But he's not a, I mean, there's no home there.
It's a vacant parcel.
Is this, are the surrounding parcels vacant too? Like, it looks like it, but I can't.
Yes, there's a developed property on Dorothy on the other side of the hill, but on, on the Olte Panga side, we actually have two contiguous properties that we own to the south that we acquired through tax default. And this property is almost a mirror image of those two. I went out and took a look at it. Very wooded, very steep. I imagine pretty tough to develop. Don't know the reason why they want to donate it, but we have a strong property acquisition program. Then I pick up lots like this all the time on tax default, and this one just fell in our lap.
Okay. As long as there's no hidden catch, like some, I don't know, sinkhole on it. I, I don't know what it would be, but it, it looked very different than some of the others because we didn't have to pay for it.
There was no visible damage, sloughing, sliding, landsliding, anything of that nature that I can tell. Obviously, we didn't do a geology report on it, but there's nothing visible. And you can usually tell when there's a scar.
I'm just, I just was wondering, because it's odd to get one like this.
It, it is very odd, but.
All right.
Any other comments on item eight? Okay. I'll make a note that on item number nine, we did receive a clarifying supplemental agenda report that was distributed for the agenda item. But if there's nobody pulling item number nine, we'll move to item number 10. Council, or Mayor Protem Bazagian.
Item number 10, I had a question about, you know, some of these programs and funding opportunities come with requirements, stipulations. What, there's nothing here. I mean, we just get this funding, and there's no requirement that, other than to use the funding, there's no other requirement?
Excellent question, Mayor Protem Bazagian. With us tonight is Michael Neal, the city's CDBG consultant. And I think he'll be able to mention some of the requirements for folks that are enrolled or accepting these programs. He's attending via Zoom.
Oh, okay. I'm looking for him. I'm not seeing.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay.
See, how do I, how do I get my video on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I can't seem to engage my, oh, there we go. Did that work?
Hold on, we're running in.
Okay. Yes, the only requirements for these funds, and, and the city is not required to even accept them, are just that we follow the guidelines that's within the required income limit for the folks that receive the rental assistance, and the documentation that we collect to verify the rental agreements that they have and verification of income, that that's collected and maintained, and we receive reimbursements through the county, Los Angeles County, for this. And it's fairly straightforward. It's somewhat similar to the city's existing rental assistance program.
Yes. Okay. If there's no other requirements, then I guess that's it. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With no further questions, can I entertain a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
I have moved by councilmember Weintraub, seconded by councilmember Albrecht. All those in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. That brings us to new business end. We're moving to our Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2024. This will be presented by Community Development Director Michael Klein.
Good evening. I'm actually joined by our planner, planner Jaclyn Rackerby, and then our city planner, Tom Bartlett. Jaclyn will go through the actual presentation.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. Pull up my presentation. Before you tonight is our annual progress report for the city's housing element for our 2024 reporting period. A little bit of background on the state requirements. State law requires that the city file an annual progress report regarding implementation of our housing element to the city council and to file it with the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, OPR, and the State Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD. The law also requires that the report be considered at a public meeting before the city council in order to give the public an opportunity to comment on the city's progress. So the annual progress report summarizes residential building activity, the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, progress, and progress of housing program implementation for the 2024 calendar year. The report is prepared on forms provided by HCD and utilizes definitions that are adopted by HCD. So the table on this slide summarizes entitlement activity for 2024. So this is the number of units that have received planning approval in the prior calendar year. So as you can see, we have 12 units that were approved at very low income, two units at low income, two units at moderate income, and 83 units at above moderate income. And I apologize, this row has a typo. That should be 99 units in total. And I do also want to mention on this slide, the majority of the very low, low and moderate units that are shown in this table are ADUs and JADUs, for which a property owner has informed staff that they plan to rent it out at a certain dollar amount. These are not deed-restricted units. So these units are not required to be kept at the specified dollar amount. And so for that reason, in HCD's table, they do differentiate between deed-restricted versus non-deed-restricted affordable units. In this next table at the top, you can see building activity for 2024. This is table A2 from HCD's report. And again, these requirements and definitions are as adopted by HCD. This first table for building permits issued, this is units that have been issued permits for construction in 2024. So as you can see, we have So as you can see, we have three very low-income units, zero low-income units, one moderate-income unit, and 12 above-moderate-income units, for a total of 16 units permitted for construction in 2024. And just for context, we had 15 units that were issued building permits last year, so we have one more unit this year than last year. And then looking at this table at the bottom here, this is a cumulative summary of all of the building permits that have been issued for our reporting period so far, so that runs from 2021 to 2029, our six-cycle housing element. This column shows the progress that we've made so far between 2021 and 2024. So in total, we have six units that have been permitted for very low income, zero units that have been permitted at low income, nine units permitted at moderate income, 26 at above moderate, for a total of 41 units that have been issued building permits during our six-cycle housing element. So we have 354 units in total for our regional housing needs allocation, and that's about 12% of our total required RENA that's been issued permits so far. Remaining, we have 126 very low-income units, 71 low-income units, 61 moderate-income units, and 55 above-moderate-income units for 313 units that are still remaining. On this next slide, you can see a map that shows our inventory of our 2021 to 2029 housing element multifamily sites, and here's a table that shows the sites that correspond with each number on this map. So we have just a few updates for some of the sites on this map. First site number 11, which is the Commons. This was initially approved in 2023 and titled at 119 units, and there was a subsequent revision in 2024 in which the applicant reduced the size to 80 units. And because building permits were not issued in 2024 and the original entitlement was in 2023, that was not captured on our current report for 2024, but once building permits are issued, if that's later in 2025, then that will be captured next year in our next year's report. And then for site number three, which is the Park Apartments, right here, that project is still in process, there have been no entitlements or permits issued on that site yet. Site number 12, which is Craftsman's Corner, we continue to field inquiries for that site as the annexation effort is still in progress. And lastly, for site number eight over here, which is the Avalon Apartments, as of 2024, our only update is that we continue to field inquiries on that site. As of 2025, we do have a new application that was submitted, however, again, because that was in the 2025 calendar year, it was not captured in the 2024 progress report, and that will be captured next year. This is just a recap of affordable housing in Calabasas, because we do require, we are required to report this back to HCD as well. We currently have three deed-restricted affordable housing properties in the city, Avanti, which has eight units, Canyon Creek, which has 75 units, and Paxton, which has four units. All three of those properties are dedicated to very low income. And at Avanti, it's made up of one bedrooms and two bedrooms, so right now, for the one bedrooms, the maximum rent is $1,248. For a two-bedroom, the maximum rent is $1,404, and the maximum income for the one-bedroom units is $55,450 a year. And for the two bedrooms, the max income is $62,400 a year. Paxton is similar, they just only have one-bedroom units. So for Paxton, our max one-bedroom rent is $1,248, and our maximum annual income is So to conclude, the housing element progress report is informational only, it requires only discussion at a public meeting, as required by HCD. There are no actions necessary on the part of the city council. So staff recommends that the council take public comment and then receive and file this report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any council questions? Start with Councilmember Weintraub.
I don't have any at this time, thank you.
Mayor Protam Buzagian?
Is now the time for comments?
You can, but the script says it's after the public speaks.
Okay, well, I have some comments.
Do you have any questions?
No.
All right. Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Ed. Jaclyn, great report. Thank you very, very much. The, you mentioned deed-restricted and non-deed-restricted. Could you explain the difference?
Sure, thank you. So for a deed-restricted unit, similar to the affordable housing units that I showed on the previous slide, they're restricted for a certain duration, typically 30, or I think 55 is what's required nowadays. For our non-deed-restricted units, which is typically the ADUs and the JADUs, they're under no obligation legally to keep those units affordable, they've just indicated to us that they plan to rent it out for a certain dollar amount, and that could change. So HCD just requires us to report them in two different columns, since deed-restricted will definitely stay at a specific, or within a specific threshold for 55 years, non-deed-restricted could change, so we just report them slightly differently.
Very good. Thank you. I have one more question. You said you had some inquiries on Craftsman's Corner. I know you mentioned also, there was another inquiry you had somewhere, I'd write it down, but on Craftsman's, can you explain the type of inquiry you were getting?
Yeah, I'll take that. We're getting inquiries from either owners who are interested in selling property, and sometimes those who are interested in buying property, and in one case, one who just did buy it, who wanted to do mixed-use, particularly multifamily, on the sites that are identified in the housing element. So there is interest in redeveloping some of the properties, and they're consistent with our general plan, and they're just waiting for the annexation to go through.
Any indication about what type of property, how many units, or anything of that nature?
It's too early to say. It would be in the density range that the general plan has, plus density bonus, almost certainly. So it would be similar to what you've seen with projects in this vicinity.
Thank you. Thank you both very much.
And I'll just ask, I've, I've heard of other interest in inquiries of other properties and applications, not necessarily an application, but you mentioned two, have there been others in properties maybe not on our housing element?
Well, I know, I mean, I just got an inquiry this week for another property that's not a site in our housing element exactly, but it's definitely in our inventory, and that's another identified office corridor building that is in the CMU district, with the intent of it eventually turning over and being redeveloped, and those owners are now exploring that possibility. I don't want to reveal any of the details at this time, but it was a pleasant surprise. We have more interest.
All right, well, hopefully we're stirring up a little more interest in building in Calabasas along our, along the lines of our housing element, hopefully. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go back to council comments, and Mayor Protam Buzagian, you seem to want to go first.
Well, I'm happy to go first. This is a subject I've addressed before, and as I've stated publicly, I no longer am bound by the housing element. I believe the city's no longer bound to follow the housing element for a couple basic reasons. First of all, there is now no longer any nexus between the housing element and needs. California, since it was admitted to the Union in 1850, has gained population every year until 2020, when the population started declining. We're now, in the last five years, we're negative half a million people net. So there is now no longer any, we keep getting these housing numbers that we have to produce additional housing, and it's just, just rife with misinformation because we don't, and the population will continue to go down, and part of the reason is the quality of life. I mean, there's just no, there's many things associated with housing that the state doesn't account for. As they require more housing, they downgrade parking requirements, they don't require street improvements, and then you can see, particularly during times when we need to evacuate, you can't even get out of the city. So there being no longer any nexus between the population patterns and the housing element, it just, it doesn't even have a rational basis to exist. In Calabasas's particular situation, the, the main reason why the housing element is no longer valid is that the state is no longer empowered to enforce it here. And I use one of the oldest legal principles around, which is that a criminal and a criminal actor cannot benefit from his or her crimes. In 2020, the state misappropriated funds, the Housing and Community Development Department did, by interfering directly in our campaigns for Measure N. In particular, one of the heads of the Housing and Community Development Departments, one of the directors, named Zachary Olmstead, misappropriated state money in a criminal manner, and directly helped fund the Yes on N campaign. That is strictly forbidden by the government code. He has not been prosecuted. Instead of getting his punishment, which should have been state prison, he is now a deputy director, he was elevated, I believe, since that time, and based on his criminal conduct, the state has pretty much forfeited its right to come in here and enforce the law. So until I see him in prison, and until I see a complete accounting for the misappropriation of this money, I'm not bound by the housing element, and the city's not bound by the housing element. That's my legal analysis from a layman's point of view, and I believe we would win in the right venue, and therefore, I'm not, I will judge each development as it comes along, as to the appropriateness for the city, but I'm not going to be bound by any written housing element any longer. So I won't be voting for this. If, I don't know, it doesn't sound like it needs a vote, but even though it doesn't need a vote, I want to register my disapproval of the housing element, which I think I've done adequately here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Weintraub?
Hard to go after that. I actually don't, my only comments are that, I guess, kind of a question comment, in light of the state's new fire maps, it would be my hope that the state would relook at requirements for local cities. I mean, I know we were in a high-fire severity zone before, and we still are, but if you look at the percentage of areas within the state that are now in that, it has drastically increased, which I think is a huge issue that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, and I would certainly agree with both of you very, very much. The, particularly on the fire aspect, certainly James, it's a given that we would feel that way, but on the fire aspect, especially with our experience with housing and development, it doesn't make any sense that with the decline in population and just the fear aspect when there is an evacuation, can we get out, can we not, to potentially add more housing on top of that makes it very, very difficult for us to understand. So I'm completely supportive of relaxing that standard, or I should say, not relaxing it, tightening it so there isn't as much development, and we have more control over the development. So, thank you.
All right, and I'll just add a few comments of my own then. I somewhat agree with Councilmember Buzagian, but not quite as strongly. I will say that I'm proud of our city for creating a housing overlay district, for trying to incentivize housing projects and development in areas where the city can most accommodate them as far as traffic and freeway access and outside of the hillsides and the hard-to-reach dead-end streets, and I think our housing element was very well thought out, and I'm glad to see it starting to play out. And certainly, I appreciate all of the time that you guys have taken to put this together and continue to share this with us. I don't think we really need to take any action on this tonight. I believe our challenge is to receive and file. So if there's no further comment, entertain a motion to receive and file.
I thought we weren't doing that.
We don't have to, we don't need a motion on that? We can just do it? Okay, let's do it. With that, there's nothing to do on this item, we'll move on to oral reports. Does council have anything to report? Councilmember Albrecht, do you have anything more?
I just have a few. One of my favorite little pet cousins here, the Clean Power Alliance, what they've actually done every month is amazing, more and more and more. I just have to compliment them. New solar and battery storage projects, because the grid is just, you have just so much, the best next option for them is to help neighborhoods and municipalities have power through batteries. So they've expanded that a great deal. And also, power storage batteries have now helped over 270,000 homes and have created almost 1,000 jobs. So it's moving along quickly, and you'll probably see more of these projects throughout the region. And I had a government affairs meeting on Monday with the Chamber of Commerce, which is very well-attended. This is a wonderful meeting, it's open to the public, I welcome anybody to come. We did have two guests that came in, it's through the Chamber of Commerce, Calabasas Chamber of Commerce, it's on their website, so you have to request to come in, but you won't be denied, and it's really sharing information between the deputies in the field offices for Supervisor Horvath, Jackie Erwin, and Senator Ben Allen, hosted by the Chamber CEO, and it's just wonderful. So I would encourage anybody that want to know a little bit more about the government affairs in our region to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weintraub?
Just wanted to elaborate on what Ed spoke about earlier. Last Friday, I, along with some of my colleagues, attended an event that was a collaboration between the Los Virginus Municipal Water District and Oceanwell, and what they're doing is there's a pilot program at the Los Virginus Municipal Water District reservoir that's going to be looking at the feasibility of harvesting, harvesting drinking water from deep-water desalination pods, and it's really groundbreaking technology, and it's such innovation from our water district, and I was just really blown away by being there and seeing the new technology, and that we're able to be on the forefront of that. So I just want to congratulate our partners at the water district, and it'd be great to be able to share more information with our community on this really exciting pilot project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Buzagian?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, I do have a few things, I'll make them quick. First of all, I will add, for the desalination, that was a fascinating tour, and the question I get asked most often is, why are we testing desalination in a freshwater lake? And the answer to that is, they aren't testing the desalination component, they already know how to do that. They're testing the, the method of extracting the water without harming or capturing the aquatic life around it. So it's, it's an environmental test, is what it is. Proud to announce that our city had a check by our Lost Hills Sheriff's Station with minor decoys trying to purchase tobacco at our retail locations, and we passed 100% compliance. Congratulations to our city, and thank you to our retailers for upholding the law. Also wanted to note that T-Mobile is proposing six additional cell tower coverage here in the city of Calabasas, so we're always looking for that. Hopefully that project moves forward quickly. That's another piece of exciting news to share. I will also say that I did meet with the Coming Group regarding our citywide solar and energy initiatives, and we're excited to share some news about that in the near future. That project is continuing forward. And obviously, we had a few meetings with the Palisades Fire Ad Hoc Committee, we had our Arbor Day celebration, and then lastly, I'll just announce, thank you to CPHA. The HOA met last night and asked if I would join them and share a few comments about what's going on in the city, and I'll make note that for the other HOAs in our city, that your council is available and interested to participate. So if you have a date coming up and would like one of us to join you, please give us a shout. And that's all I have. City manager, do you have anything to report?
I do, Mayor, just a couple things. Speaking on cell towers, you mentioned that, our, our city's IT team has been diligently working on the Civic Center Plaza, and, and we've brought in three new boosters, those have been installed. We're already seeing incredible amount of coverage and improved coverage at the Civic Center. So those were installed here at City Hall, Library, and then Senior Center, is that correct, Scott? At the Senior Center. So blanketed the three buildings with those, and we'll continue to look at that and monitor that as well. Just also, for the council's information, LA County Consolidated Sewer Management District is looking at a rate increase this year, and so that will affect the community. That's required to go through the Proposition 218 process, and we'll be sharing more information with the council, and then also we'll have representatives from the district do a presentation at our council meeting as well, and then we'll be sharing that information to the public as that becomes available. A couple more things. We are seeing quite a bit of tenant improvements in our commercial buildings. And a couple to note, the Pepperdine Campus on Agora Road is doing, nearly done with a large tenant improvement, and they're, they will be opening a state-of-the-art nursing school here in Calabasas. So we're really excited about that. Again, our building and planning have been working with them over time. That's coming soon. That's a big win for our community to, to be able to host that nursing school in Calabasas. Similarly, ResMed, one of our long-term businesses, is undertaking significant tenant improvements. We also appreciate, always appreciate our businesses when they invest in the community, and especially those that have been along here a long time and are making improvements to stay, and those that are coming in and make improvements to be able to operate efficiently. And then finally, our Community Services Department, in honor of National Pickleball Month in April, will be doing, hosting a couple of pickleball events at DeAnza and the community centers. We'll have more information on that.
And that concludes our business. So we will now be adjourning back into closed session and returning here for an open session April 9.